The time is 5:30. This is a special closed session for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Present. Members, do you have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none. Now is the time for public comment on the closed session items. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the closed session items? Seeing none, we will move to item five, which is the closed session, and we will be taking item 5.1 inclusive of 5.1.1 and 5.1.2 in closed session. The time is 5:31.
Recording stopped.
The time is 5:46, and we are reporting out from closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Mora, for items 5.1.1 and 5.1.2. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. The time is 5:46. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 5:46. This is a special meeting for the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora.
Present. Next, we have the approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon? Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on the items not on the agenda, you may come to the podium, and you'll have two minutes. Seeing none, we'll move to action item 6.1. This is the appointments for our planning commission. So we have three vacancies, and we've received five applications. I'd like to note that the three incumbents have reapplied. Each applicant will have around 10 to 15 minutes. They'll be asked a few questions, and I'll ask a standard set of questions, and then I'll defer to the council for additional questions. So let's get started with Samuel Feldman here. Please come to the podium, and you can give us a short personal statement. Why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? And in your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, experience, and any past civic involvement.
Sure. Thank you so much for having these and letting me talk about this a little bit. I brought some more talismans than, you know, like props, I guess, but some of the work I've done over the years or been involved with. So I have an undergrad degree in urban and metropolitan studies, a master's in public administration, both from ASU, Arizona State. I was Marvin Andrews Fellow Fellowship Program for Future Urban Management Leaders, usually city management. And so some of that work included working with some of the, I think, better academic planners in the country, including, we did some interesting work on the canal system in Arizona. There are longer, more canals in Phoenix, Arizona than there are in Venice. And so how do we leverage that and turn it into something usable for recreation and whatever? So it was always about, my academic experience, I guess, there was about harvesting the strengths that are there and that maybe have been neglected for a long time. So my work experience, I was a management analyst for the city manager of Phoenix. I worked in community economic development for the city for a while, and then I spent six years as a bond rating analyst for Moody's Investor Service, covering local governments in the Western U.S. So that involves some travel to a lot of different cities and how they planned and did their work. I'm currently the manager of budget for East Bay Mud, overseeing a team that supports the one and a half billion dollar budget, grants, strategic planning, KPIs, innovation work as well. I'm also currently the vice chair of Emeryville's Budget Advisory Committee. So I've been appointed, I think, twice to that committee. So I would say I'll close with, because I think there's a time limit, that during my grad program, I made shirts for what would Jane Jacobs do? And now they like sell them. I should have, I should have put this up somewhere. But her and her style of method, I think, is referred to in the city's general plan as well, with some quotes from her. And so that really is some of where I come from, my perspective.
Thank you. The next question is, what do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
Sure. So I would see the role of a planning commissioner, make good decisions on behalf of Emeryville residents regarding development. I mean, to put it simply, it's making sure new development or redevelopments, various other requests fit with the long-term vision for the community that's been approved by, you know, through the planning commission process, through the, and through the city council, and votes along the way as well. And at the core, if you appoint me, I think it's about ensuring there's strong community input, plenty of opportunities for diverse perspectives to weigh in on items that are of general community concern. I'm also aware of and interested in the quasi, you know, judicial nature of the role, and that's a lot of responsibility to entrust in folks that you're appointing. And, you know, my background is such that I'm really interested in the individual details of how things are done. And I think it also requires a little bit of leadership and vision even among these appointed members, and because there's some decisions that are made at that level that then come to you that require a lot of thought and not just being responsive to the community, which is critical, but also trying to help lead the community in the right direction. And sometimes that's a difficult balance. I know you all have to make those decisions all the time. And I think one of the key things that I would see as my role that maybe is different than average, I would guess, is that I do think there's time where we need to not be biased towards the status quo. And that doesn't necessarily mean all new development is great, but it does mean that, to some extent, I would want to represent the people who don't live here yet or who don't enjoy the benefits of a well-run city like Emeryville, and not just making sure we're too tied to the past and history.
Thank you. The next question is, describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
Sure. Well, as, I guess, primary author of the East Bay Mud's budget book, a several-hundred-page document, I love reading that stuff, unfortunately, for me, I guess. But, so I've, before I applied, and then this weekend again, I sort of read through the general plan, you know, land use, transportation, parks, open space, public facilities and services, urban design, the key elements, right? And there's also some future vision in that document that got me really excited to be a resident here. And if you select me for the planning commission as a member of that group, I would be really excited to help implement that. Like the vision for the East Bay Bridge Center on page 525, Pal Street Plaza, there's some really exciting things going on in there that I hope we could see through the process. I also love that includes requirements for recycled water usage. You know, there's great infrastructure. It's very expensive to put those purple pipes in the ground. Once they're there, let's try to get demand up, use as much as we can for non-potable uses. That reduces, you know, that's my interest maybe on the part of this I wouldn't be representing. But other documents I read through, the housing element was just updated in 2023 for the 2023 to 2031. Citywide design guidelines just updated in 2023. The active transportation plan, which this is the kind of guy I am, there's a little typo there that I'll send to Navar Oaks, who I think is up for reappointment to the budget committee. It says shopping car, not cart, anyway. And so I'm committed to making sure that those plans are meaningfully implemented through the planning commission and then up to the city council.
Thank you. The next question is, give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process. And please explain why.
Sure. So, you know, Sutter Health brings in a lot of money as the budget advisory hat. That's great. The Rivian Project, I think, is a critical thing. I talked about a little bit in my application. Pursuing those skilled trades is, I think, critical as well. But I'm going to use one that's on the street I live on, 47th Street, north of San Pablo. I followed the documents as much as I could, but it was of San Pablo. I followed the documents as much as I could, but it was a conversation about four units that were maybe up to six that came up for planning commission review in 2020. There was a lot of, there was only a handful of public comments, but very negative against the project. And something, you know, it was, when it was proposed then, it was turning these four units into six. And one of the things I really care about, as someone with a progressive muscular dystrophy, is access. And one of the things that I liked about that project is it took the four curb cuts that were there down to one, which improves access, especially right next to the Temescal Creek Park. I mean, what's great about ADA access is it's not just good for folks in wheelchairs or with mobility issues, but it's also good for people with strollers or people on bikes. And so that's, I think, a critical part of what should be. So it was a great project. And then, but the planning commission did not recommend it. They recommended denial because of the sort of displacement of people. The result, though, was that only four units were built, that people were displaced, and those units were sold for a lot. And so I think it was not a great outcome. Now, there was at the council level negotiated sort of thing, but it didn't end up getting built. I'm not sure why. But I think that's the kind of small decisions that are really critical for the planning commission to make well for the future of the community.
Thank you, Sam. I'd now like to ask any other members of the council if they have questions. Members, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Next, do we have Rodney Henme? Welcome.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Rodney Henme. I'm a longtime Emeryville resident. I moved here 30 years ago and lived one block away on 59th Street and subsequently moved to the, in 2002, to the Emeryville, Christie Avenue Commons. And during that time, I've seen the dramatic improvements and changes that have occurred to Emeryville, which has given me a very much appreciation for what a planning commission can do because of things like the bike way path and the connections that have been made. My background is as an architect. I graduated from University of Minnesota and have a master's in urban design from Washington University in St. Louis. And my focus on my career has been on affordable housing. I've completed several thousand units of affordable housing, K-12 schools, and senior housing. And as well, I've been a university teacher at Washington University in St. Louis, which I think has been, that experience and expertise has allowed me to quickly review and make hopefully constructive and cogent recommendations to improve the design of projects. And finally, I believe very much in contributing to the, to the public realm. I serve on nonprofit boards, including one for Glide Church, and also for a senior community in Japantown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, what do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
I think the role of a planning commissioner is to challenge development and developers to produce their very best work and to contribute to the quality of the life of the city. That might mean that their, the project need, the design, for example, can be improved, but also that it hopefully contributes the maximum that it can to the public realm through connections, for example, and that it needs to be an important contributor in that sense. One example that I wanted to give is that I attended the, I was not on the planning commission at the time, but I attended the public meetings for the Bay Street Grocery. And I watched Chair Keller, at that time, challenge the developer to limit their entries from two entries to one entry. And he had the research and the background, and that was not what the developer wanted to do, but ultimately, they agreed to it. That was a huge improvement to that project, because the other entry would have been driving right down the now current plaza. So that's the role of a planning commissioner, is to really understand the issues and seek the best solutions.
Thank you. Next, describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that you've been, that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
Yes. So of course, I've read the general plan, and one of the goals that I thought was really striking was the idea of an imageable and memorable city, which I think the city, the planning commission has a lot to do with, because this talks about urban design and architecture and creating the kind of buildings, the kind of developments that will create such a quality of life. Gone through the zoning code, contributed to contributions to that for the family-friendly housing, for example, housing element, complete street policy, citywide design guidelines and specific plans, been through all of those. But the one thing that I wanted to mention is that as an architect, I've led many teams to go through entitlement processes, which of course have to work with all of those requirements. So I know this process, and I know even state rules that, such as SB 35 and TCAC regulations for affordable housing. And so I can bring that kind of experience to the planning commission.
Thank you. Next, give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process.
So I wanted to mention the Emory Apartments, because I attended some of the meetings for that process and included was, I was actually invited by the architects to speak on that project. And the way they have the linear park on the west side that connects all the way from the bridge to the south, the inclusion of the major park, and the fact that that park location was changed in reference to community input, I think, was a great development. The fact that it densifies the city in a place that had virtually no housing, or little housing. And the 45th Street cut through the lab building that allows you to walk through that building. That's the kind of design that I think probably was a challenge to the developer, but has really allowed people to connect to the overall development without having to go around a building. So I think that was a very good project.
Thank you, Rodney. Now I'd like to open it up to the rest of the council. Members, do you have any follow-up questions for Rodney? Seeing none? Thank you, Rodney.
There was another six closing remarks. Anything else you would like to add? But I noticed your other applicant wasn't allowed that opportunity as well.
We were, I was concerned about time. I think we can check in at the end and maybe ask the applicants if they'd like to make any closing remarks.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Next, we have Diane Martinez. Welcome, Diane.
Good evening.
So, why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? And in your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, experience, including any past civic engagement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council. You might remember me from my own tenure here, eight years on city council, two years, two terms, serving as mayor here in the city of Emeryville. I am interested in continuing to serve on Emeryville's planning commission, to expand on the work that has the city recognized with a pro-housing designation from the state. In my time back on city council, I helped to craft the landlord-tenant protections and just cause policies so that as we build housing that the state so desperately needs, we protect the people who already live here in this city at the same time. I'm also proud of the over 1,200 units approved or permitted during my tenure, 371 of which were affordable. And finally, when I served on Emeryville City Council, I participated in putting on a $50 million housing bond on the ballot, which the voters of Emeryville overwhelmingly approved. And I'd like to remain engaged in the process and see that those housing bonds are turned into housing. And additionally, as you're well aware, we have some big projects coming up after a period of quiet due to the economic state of our country. But we potentially have a large medical campus coming to town. We also potentially have the opportunity of reintroducing housing at the Oxford site across from Public Market. And I'm very invested and interested in participating in making those as fantastic as possible for all of our community members.
Thank you, Diane. What do you see as the role of a planning commissioner?
Planning commissioners, they make recommendations on land use and zoning regulations. There's a lot of stuff that we do that's very cookie cutter. We make sure that the general plan is being used when creating new plans for developments. But we also contribute to and give feedback to those living documents. So our general plan hasn't officially been updated since 2009, but there are many parts of it that the planning commission has had the opportunity to weigh in on, the housing element, the active transportation plan. The planning commission is one of the bodies that, you know, gets to participate in having a voice and giving voice to our friends and neighbors and community members here in Emeryville, and making sure that everyone is heard.
Can you describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the last two years?
Well, I haven't memorized the general plan, but I have read it. It's quite long. But most recently, we have had to re-review the housing element. And very recently, the planning commission did get the report on our active transportation plan. So that's another portion of our planning documents that I'm well familiar with, and I'm very proud of all of the progress that we've made as a city, especially with our bike and pedestrian connectivity. That is a general theme in our general plan, that I think we've executed on very well. And I'm just so pleased to continue meeting and seeing people who have moved to our town because of these planning changes that we have made, because they're able to push a stroller safely on the sidewalks, because they're able to walk and bike around town, because we don't prioritize single occupancy vehicles as the main mode of transportation for our residents and visitors.
Can you give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process?
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Henme and just state how pleased I am with the way that the Emory has turned out and all, the whole neighborhood. It's, we've created a neighborhood, essentially. So Horton Landing Park, Hoochin Park, that whole, I think he described it as a linear park, the pathway, they've recently added some wayfinding that I think is really helpful to people on foot or on bike. These are parts of the city that weren't necessarily a destination, but are a destination now. And from my neighborhood in the triangle, this, it's a, it's a direct thoroughfare to Bay Street, which I consider to be our main street of Emeryville. We don't have a main street, but we have Bay Street. So that's, that's the way my family gets there.
Thank you, Diane. Members, I'd like to open it up for any follow-up questions. Do we have any questions for Diane Martinez? Thank you, Diane.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Isaiah Phillips. Welcome, Isaiah.
Hi there. Good afternoon. How is everyone?
So to start this off, why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? And in your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement.
Sure, absolutely. So my name is Isaiah Phillips. I'm a proud resident of the city of Emeryville, going on 1.5, almost two years now. And I simply really enjoy living in Emeryville. I'm very proud of how walkable, how accessible everything is. I'm a proud dog owner, so she loves walking around Emeryville, feeling safe and seeing the cleanliness of the streets. And overall, Emeryville provides just good vibes all the way around across the area, emphasizing the need for growth and potential, you know, people coming to the, to our environment. My educational background, I currently hold a master's in business administration from Cal State East Bay. I also hold a undergrad degree in emergency management and homeland security. Most of that, the homeland security piece, just for contextual FYI, is more tied together with our FEMA courses. So nothing with the way that the currency of the nation is, but a lot of it's in disaster preparedness, community involvement, and ensuring that there's contingency plans down the road. Why I am wanting to serve on the committee is because I want to use my professional and lived experiences to ensure that Emeryville is creating responsible, practical, and enhancing the quality of life for all residents. I'm also seeking clarity on zoning laws as impactful, just because of the downstream effects that it may have in future generations that are going to reside here. And I'm most hopeful to bring diversity to the committee. Truth be told, this is my first civic engagement, so I'm very excited and grateful for the opportunity to stand in front of you guys and see what I could do to bring a different set of lenses to the table regarding planning commission for the great city of Emeryville.
Thank you. And what do you see as your role of a, as the role of a planning commissioner?
Sure. So the way that I see planning commissioner is that their primary body is to research and study the growth and development proposals submitted to the city within the jurisdiction. So that way, the council is able to provide recommendations on relevant topics, ask in-depth questions on these proposals that are coming in, to ensure that the long, long-lasting effects of the proposals coming in are going to be beneficial, not only to the community in the current state, but in the future as well.
Can you describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that the city has adopted in the past two years?
Sure. So the Cliff Notes version of a general city plan is that it's required by the state to provide and maintain the framework in which the city addresses goals, policies, and future development. A couple documents that come to mind that you guys have recently seen include the Tesla Collision Center, which was withdrawn in January, I believe, the Rivian Service Center planning documents, and as well as bringing in Sutter Health as the flagship hospital to Emeryville. It's going to be a rather large project. I believe that they have a goal of opening in about eight years in 2033. And so my extensive background in healthcare operations is, again, circling back to the first question, is kind of why I'm seeking appointment to the council. I currently work for the largest, one of the larger employers of Alameda County. And so I believe that I bring expertise of how healthcare systems operate and work. And I'm really looking forward to seeing how Sutter Health can provide the access to care to the community of Emeryville.
Next, can you give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process?
Sure. So the Nellie Hannan Gateway Project on San Pablo that's due to open, I believe, this summer, kind of hits on three major points that I align my overall philosophy with, which is equity, ensuring that there's dedicated units to the unhoused and those under economic threshold. The second part is the artistic part of it. So the mural that you can see from the freeway when you're driving by, I think, is very impactful. And it's, it stands out, so that way draws attention to it. And lastly is the accessibility. I think putting it in the centralized location of San Pablo, where it's touching Oakland, it's close to all major transit lines, as well as the freeway, it shows other cities that you don't have to put these developments far outside of the city landscape, that they can be intertwined with local environments as well.
Thank you. Now I'd like to open it up to the rest of the council. Members, do you have any follow-up questions for Isaiah? Thank you, Isaiah.
Great. Thank you.
Next, we have Jordan Wax. Welcome, Jordan. For the first question, why are you interested in serving on the city's planning commission? And in your response, please include a summary of your relevant education, skills, and experience, including any past civic involvement.
Well, good evening. My name is Jordan Wax. And for the last several years, I have worked on various boards in this city, including, starting with the Housing Committee, and then moving on to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, later being appointed to the later being appointed to the Planning Commission, which I am applying to be reappointed to, and then taking up the planning commissioner role in the Parks and Recreation Committee. This work has given me a significant amount of time, both working with the committee and through the work that is expected of me, working on these committees to deeply study the built environment in this community. And whenever an issue has come in front of us, I have spoken from my values and connected them to what we are looking at. And I believe that those values are reflected in our general plan and reflect this community's values. And if reappointed, that is what I'm going to do. I'm going to continue to try and push this community in the direction that it seems to want to go, which is to have a beautiful, equitable, environmentally forward, joyful, and connected community. And I want to continue to be one of the many hands that is pushing us in that direction, because it is a direction and not a destination.
Thank you. Next, what do you see as your role as a planning commissioner?
Well, the textbook answer is that something along the lines of a planning commissioner is supposed to review proposals and to see how they comply with the general plan and the various subplans that we have, look at modifying those plans, look at individual projects. But I think that the four applicants who have come before me have expanded on that pretty significantly with, yes, we are supposed to be trying to get the best we can out of a project that comes in front of us. I also believe that a planning commissioner should try to represent the people who are not already part of the community, because those are future community members. And I believe that a planning commissioner should always be trying to make those connections between what the community wants and all of the various documents that represent that and formalize that.
Next, please describe your knowledge of the city's general plan and any other major planning documents that have been adopted by the city council in the past two years.
Well, of course, as a sitting planning commissioner, I've spent a fair amount of time with the general plan as it is. Also, as a B-PAC member, I was one of the many people who actively worked on the current ATP, the Active Transportation Plan. We also worked on now the pedestrian wayfinding plan, which has come before you, was on the Housing Committee, and also, again, on the Planning Commission. We have spent time looking at the housing element. Pretty familiar. I don't claim to have an encyclopedic knowledge. I have not, again, memorized the general plan. But yes, I've spent quite a bit of time with it and have my name on a couple of documents for whatever that's worth.
Can you give one example of a recent economic development or housing project in Emeryville that exemplifies your point of view regarding design, community benefit, and/or community process? And please explain why.
So there was a social media post that I saw within the last couple of years that I really, really connected with. And I'm going to try and paraphrase it the best I can, which is that every city should have a cathedral, not something that is denominational or toward any specific belief system, but a cathedral unto itself, an intergenerational project that just keeps going in the direction of what the city wants to be. And to me, the project that most exemplifies that is the Emeryville Greenway. It is something that I think is in a state of, you could say, completion right now, especially after the current work that is being planned on Doyle Street. But it is one that opens the opportunity for generation after generation to contribute to it. And not only from the city municipal level, but because of the way it touches so many people, so many properties, so many neighborhoods, two different cities. Hopefully, eventually, we have a formal connection with the Mandela Parkway, which would make it a connection that goes all the way from the West Oakland Bart to Berkeley Bowl West. But we have the opportunity to, piece by piece, add to that year after year, and not just us, but also all of those people. If you are a business owner who is on the Greenway, there is nothing stopping you from making it a more artistic place. If you are a resident, there is nothing stopping you from making it a greener place. And so it is something that all of us as a community have the opportunity to contribute to and will never, ever be finished. And so that, to me, is one of the things that truly exemplifies the way I look at developing the city.
Thank you. I'd now like to open it up to the members. Any follow-up questions? Thank you, Jordan. Seeing that we are doing well on time, I would now like to briefly re-invite the members back, or the applicants, to give a closing remark. So Samuel, is there anything you would like to add as a closing remark to the city council in our deliberations?
Sure. Well, you all have great choices. Not every city council, or even the city council in the past, has had this many great choices. I applied before knowing that the three incumbents were interested. And they're great, have great experience. So I think you also would have two Sam's if you appoint me, Sam Gould, who just joined recently. So, you know, make a decision wisely, I think. But I do have an educational background in planning. I have no financial relationship, and I don't work in that industry, which I think is critical, to have that outside voice. I do have a long career in public service, very technical understanding of the mechanisms of government. And it's been, I mean, since eighth grade, has been a thing I've been interested in. How does local government work? I believe in responsive government and one that leads, not just responds. That means making difficult decisions and representing the people who aren't in the room. And that would be, and those not speaking up, including future residents. And then I think a voice that's missing, you know, we all, the commission members, got this presentation on the diversity of committees and commissions for the city. And one thing missing, I thought, was disability, which some people don't want to self-disclose, so it's complicated. But I think that's a thing I would bring, that another candidate or applicant talked about one entrance, and that makes me really nervous, because walking a long distance is not something I can do easily now and gets worse over time. So I'd really want to bring that perspective of how do we make sure everyone has access, no matter what their abilities are? And so I think that's what would bring, what's special about me. But good luck to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam. Next, Rodney. Closing remarks.
Yes, thank you. So I was born in St. Louis, but returned 30 years ago to the Bay Area. And I consider myself a third-generation Bay Area resident because my mother, who is Japanese, I'm Japanese-American, left 50 years before I returned because she was put in one of the Japanese-American prison camps during World War II. And I think this incident is one of the motivators for my own approach to life and the idea that social justice and equity are extremely important values. I've been, throughout my career, an advocate of this. I've been an important member of the National Organization of Minority Architects, where I was on the national board for several years. And my career of focusing on affordable housing and socially responsible projects is very much a key part of that. And finally, I believe that good architecture and urban design really makes a better world and that the planning commission can help inspire applicants to do better and hopefully make this a more memorable and imageable community that the general plan asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Next, Diane.
I don't think you can make any bad choices tonight. We have fantastic applicants. I hope whoever doesn't get appointed tonight, and it may be me, but I hope they keep their name in the hat, because there are always vacancies. I wish we had this many good applicants when I was on council every time that we needed to appoint for planning commissioner, because it's phenomenal. And it's great to see so many people who are active and who care in the community about land use. Because who really wants to dive into that general plan, which is about this big when you print it out? Not everyone does. So when you have people who do, you have to really appreciate them. And I appreciate my fellow applicants. And I hope everyone remains interested and stays in the wings if they are not appointed tonight.
Thank you, Diane. Next, Isaiah.
Thank you again for the opportunity. I just want to end, and again, thank you guys for the opportunity to come up here and plead my case. Again, as the new kid on the block, as Diane was saying, I am definitely open to recommendations should this seat not be a good fit for me. I'm always open to opportunities to figure out how I can be more civically engaged. One of my philosophies is to ensure that I leave the state better than when I came into it. And so whatever that might be, in this body or another body, I just want to be ensuring that I'm able to do my part to give back. And again, I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to hear me out today.
Thank you, Isaiah. And next, Jordan.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate, as previous speakers have said, that this is a great crop of applicants. And I don't think you can make any bad decisions here. I have certainly spent my time, as I think some of you have as well, on committees that were struggling to recruit and find people. And it is good to see the planning commission really get a solid pick. If you don't reappoint me, I'm just going to start blogging. So, you know, take from that what you will. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay. Next, we will open things up for a public comment before we do the council deliberation. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the planning commission applicants? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council members. Any discussion or emotion?
As for discussion, I have to agree that we have a great crop of candidates to choose from. I am very impressed with you, Sam. I have seen you give a presentation at the mayor's conference for East Bay MUD, which was very impressive. I am amazed with how you memorize piles and piles of paper and then make sense of it and bring value to it. It's absolutely phenomenal. But I also understand how the incumbents have done such great work for our city. And it would be good to see them continue. But at the same time, it would also be good to, you know, have that expertise and that diversity on the planning commission. So those are my remarks for now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, applicants, for taking the time. Some of the applicants, I believe Sam, Isaiah, and Jordan at the end, used the phrase of building towards residents who aren't already here, not just the residents who are here. However, today's Emeryville includes longtime residents who are currently facing no-fault evictions, including those displaced due to lead exposure in their homes. Some of them can no longer afford to remain in our city. As you seek to be appointed or reappointed to the planning commission, what would you say to those residents who are being displaced right now? How do you plan to balance the need of future residents with the urgent crisis that they are facing, the current ones that are facing? So I posed it as a challenge question, so you can voluntarily answer that if you'd like.
Member Pryforce.
I know it's a discussion, but, I mean, I'm just posing it as a challenge if anyone wants to answer that. If not, that's okay. We can continue.
Members, other comments or discussion? Member Welch.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if it'd be appropriate if I could ask a question of the incumbents as far as how many terms they've served for?
I think we can clarify that.
Can we clarify what the incumbents, if this is your, how many terms you've been serving for? As well as I see, Jordan said one, one, and one. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I just wanted to note that, in echoing some of the sentiments that Sam and Diane made, we really are spoiled as a council for choice here. I've never seen such a pool of talent and enthusiastic people willing to come forward and help make the city better. At the same time, I know that the incumbents that we've appointed have been doing great work, and I would like to see them continue to do that work. However, I would like to encourage Sam and Isaiah to please continue looking at the, you know, we get vacancies all the time. We have other committees that I know would be, you would be able to serve quite well. So we definitely would like to see you come back. So I'll make a motion to reappoint the incumbents to another term.
I'll second it.
Madam Clerk, the role.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item 6.2. This is the other advisory bodies. And I'd like to note, we do have a large number of positions and applicants. But interestingly, with the exception of the ACTC Paratransit Advisory Committee, we've received an equal or fewer number of applicants for the available vacancies. I'm pleased that we have so many residents and community members willing to volunteer their time. And I actually recommend that we appoint all the applicants. So I'd like to take public comment and take a motion on each committee separately. And if the applicants are here and if they would like to speak during the public comment, I would encourage them to come up during that time. However, they don't, please don't feel that you have an obligation to do so. So first, let's take item 6.2, appointments to the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We have four applications and four vacancies. And now I'd like to open public comment on this item. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jesse Olson. I work across the street, and I volunteer at Biktopia Annex, a nonprofit bike co-op in Emeryville's only bike shop. I'm an East Bay native, born and raised in East Oakland, and I ride my bike roughly 40 to 60 miles a week on East Bay streets. I have been hit by cars three times. I have an acute knowledge of what kind of infrastructure works to keep pedestrians and cyclists safe and the kinds of infrastructure that looks good on paper, but fails to be effective. I am very active in the East Bay cycling community. And as a Biktopia volunteer, I regularly meet with new people from Berkeley, Oakland, and Emeryville to hear their perspectives. I am an East Bay bike party ride leader and have led bike rides with over thousands of attendees. I ride Bart and used to take the bus a lot more before I became more of a cyclist. I also drive a car, but try and minimize that as much as possible. I have brought these experiences to the Emeryville B-PAC starting in 2023 and have made an impact by shaping the 40th Street Multimodal Project, the San Pablo redesign, and the Hollis Street redesign, among other projects. I have also assisted with inventorying and mapping locations for new bike racks in Emeryville and have worked to improve wayfinding for pedestrians and cyclists. As chair, I moderated monthly meetings in a way that helped to make everyone feel welcome and encouraged people to provide their feedback, even if it meant going against the prevailing narrative. Emeryville is already a great place to live because of the many efforts of many prior committee members, and I would like to keep up the good work.
Thank you for your comment and application. Any other public comment on the B-PAC?
Good evening, councilmembers, vice mayor and mayor. My name is Josh Cohen, and I'm here seeking another term on the city's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, finishing my first term, which, like Member Olson, also started in 2023. And so far, it's been an extremely insightful and rewarding experience. As a new parent that gets around primarily by bicycle and on foot, I want to commend the city on being a regional leader in accommodating vulnerable road users and creating a network of safe routes for pedestrians and people on bikes. Similarly, I want to highlight how crucial the perspective of parents of young children in our city is and as we think about street design. As a recently reformed fearless bicycle rider and confident pedestrian until just about 10 months ago, my perspective has changed immensely thinking about what I'm comfortable with when I'm biking my baby around or taking him around in the stroller. As I've gotten onboarded onto the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee with inter- Pedestrian Advisory Committee, with interactions amongst various agencies and interests we at BPAC interface with, along with the incredible city staff, I know my next term will be even more productive than the last, and I would love to keep the momentum going. In particular, exciting projects such as the funded 40th Street and San Pablo corridors, additions to exciting things happening with the Emeryville Loop and the upcoming Adeline improvements, among many other great projects, these are great fodder for the community and for BPAC. Even just seeing bike racks I recommended popping up across the city, and then even more so seeing those bikes, bike racks filled with bikes, has been such a heartwarming feedback loop of our committee. I would really appreciate the opportunity to continue serving on the committee, and I want to thank you for my opportunity so far serving on BPAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Any other public comment for BPAC? Welcome.
Hi. My name is David. I'm also an avid runner and biker, and I biked through Emeryville's Greenway and the Bay Trail too many times to count. I've always wanted to make an impact on my community, which is why I entered my career as a civil engineer, specifically in transportation. I've worked on multiple active transportation projects throughout the Bay Area, including the city of Fremont, the town of Koma, and the town of Windsor. I believe as an enjoyer of pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and as a civil engineer, I will be able to bring valuable insights to this committee, and I would be excited to join.
Thank you, David. Any other public comment for BPAC? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a discussion or a motion on the BPAC applicants. And just a reminder, we have four applications and four vacancies.
I just want to go ahead and point out, there were some comment cards received, I think, by us from some of the people who applied, and I just wanted to acknowledge them generally. With that, I'm ready to make a motion to move the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville appointing Joshua Cohen, Jesse Olson, David Raymond, and Natalie Stitch as to the BPAC for the terms commencing July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2027.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Budget Advisory Committee with one application for two vacancies, and the applicant is Navar Oaks, who is a current incumbent. So I'll now open public comment for the Budget Advisory Committee. Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Yes, please, Sam.
Sam Feldman, I serve as the Vice Chair on the Budget Advisory Committee now still. Navar is great to work with. But I wanted to say that second spot, if I can, is tough, has been tough to keep, I think, interested, the prior incumbent who didn't reapply. I think we just talked about it at our last meeting. Maybe there's some way to be flexible with that and not designate it for business and representative necessarily, so that we could have a better group of candidates. So just, it could be something to explore to make sure. We were not able to meet and review the budget because we couldn't meet quorum. We just happened to not be able to get folks together. So you talk about great applicants from Planning Commission, kind of bring some folks over to budget, so.
Thank you for the recommendation. We will discuss that with staff. Okay, members, any discussion or a motion on the Budget Advisory Committee?
I will move resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville appointing Navar Oaks as business representative, would it be, or?
As city labor rep.
As city labor representative to serve on the Budget Advisory Committee for the upcoming year, or the upcoming two years, let me see, 2027 through 2027, and amending the roster accordingly.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Commission on Aging. We have three applications and three vacancies, and we've had, the three applications are from three current incumbents. I will now open the public comment for this item. Any members of the public who wish to comment on the Commission on Aging applicants may come to the podium. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Thank you. As you might know, my name is John Suter. I would like you to appoint me to another term as the member of COA. During my six years of membership, yeah, three terms, the standout committee accomplishments have been the completion of the Age Friendly Action Plan. I would say it's not 100% completed because we're every year trying to advance those things that hadn't been completed when we first did it. And we're also, we upgraded the Emeryville Org website, or at least we promoted that. In my 2025, 2026, I guess it might even be 2027 term, I plan to diligently continue promoting, first, a memorial plaza in the Marina Park, and, second, I'm advocating for much safer sidewalks and pedestrian crossings throughout the city, such that I became a member also of BPAC. This is a strong advocacy I bring there. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I will move resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville appointing, I'll have my glasses. John Suter, Jerome Feldman, and Ellen Strauss to serve on the Commission of Aging for the terms ending on June 30, 2027, and amending the local roster of boards, commissions, and committees accordingly.
I see a comment from a member of Pryforce. Go ahead.
I just want to thank you, John, for presenting some of your ideas. So, you know, today we appoint community members to our various city committees, and I want to take a moment to reflect not just on who we are appointing, but on why these appointments matter. A lot of the names are familiar, community veterans, civic mainstays, and for some on this dais, that continuity feels very comfortable, like a flight plan we've flown before. We often treat city committees like comfortable routines. We rotate the same people in and out. We call it experience, but I call it inertia. But for me, and for many residents who have lived through Emeryville's deficits, our lack of tenant protections, the rise in property crime, the shuttering of black and brown-owned businesses, and the slow erosion of affordability, these are also the names of those who sat on the flight deck while we were descending. This isn't personal, it's perspective. And I want to share a story that carries weight far beyond these chambers to 2020, to a rain-soaked runway in Koh Rida, India. The most recent crash that we saw about a week ago, analysts are still analyzing what went wrong. So I had to dip a little further into the past to come up with something the experts know exactly what happened and has become a history lesson. On August 7, 2020, Air India Express Flight 1344 crashed while landing in Koh Rida. The plane skidded off the runway in poor weather, broke apart, and 21 lives were lost. The captain was experienced, highly decorated, and had logged thousands of hours, but his judgment was compromised, both in the air and on the ground. Investigations revealed issues with fatigue, lifestyle choices, and an unyielding approach that ignored repeated warnings about the runway's conditions. As the aircraft approached the runway, it was already moving too fast, hovering just above the surface, not yet touching down. The copilot could see it, the touchdown zone, the safest part of the runway to land, was disappearing fast beneath them. He said quietly, "Just, just check it," which means to just, like, set it down. It was a gentle nodge, a warning, but the captain didn't respond. Second pass, they are still flying down the runway too far in. The copilot says again, this time louder, "Captain." Now, the runway is halfway gone. Finally, the copilot calls what every pilot dreads to say but must when disaster is looming, "Go around." But the captain does not. He lands 4,000-plus feet into an 8,000-plus-foot runway, more than halfway down. He slams on the brakes, max manual braking, overriding the auto brake system. He deploys the thrust reversers. Good, they have a chance. But then he stoles them again. And that's really important. He stole them again. He thought everything was safe, and so he stowed those thrusters away. And then he says, "Shit." At the same moment, brake pressure is released, possibly to try a last-second go-around, but the engines aren't spooled for it, because engines need time. Moments later, he reapplies the brakes, he redeploy's the reversers, but it's already too late. The aircraft shoots off the runway at 60 knots. The reversers, for reasons unknown, are canceled again, but the engines are now delivering forward thrust. The plane accelerates to 84 knots. Both pilots now yell, "Shit!" The plane crashes through the localizer antenna, through the perimeter fence, and then over the edge of a gorge 110 feet down. It briefly becomes airborne again, a ghost of a flight, before it slams cockpit-first into a road below. The fuselage breaks into three pieces. Both pilots die, 19 passengers dead, 21 lives lost just like that. But I don't want to focus on the captain, because in the end, people blame the pilot, and rightfully so. But the story doesn't end with blame. I want to talk about the copilot. The copilot saw the red flags, felt the turbulence, knew that things didn't feel right, but protocol, pressure, and hierarchy got in the way. The copilot did not or could not act decisively, and that's what I want to speak to today. In Emeryville, the City Council sits in the captain's seat. The city manager and staff, they're mission control. There are air traffic controllers. They're in the control tower guiding us to procedures, but you are the copilots. That's really important for you to understand. You are right here with us. You see what we can't see. You hear what we might miss. You sense when something is off, even if the instruments say everything's fine, guiding us with data, infrastructure, and process. You're more than just advisory. You are critical to our flight. What you agendaize, what you prioritize, the questions you ask, these are your instruments. And when something doesn't feel right, when the nose starts to dip, it's your duty to speak up. As a plane flooded above the runway, passed the safe landing zone, what I'm asking is for you all to don't sit on your hands. Don't defer to the status quo. I know that everyone sitting on a committee is there with pure civic intent, but don't wait for staff to bring forward what you already know needs to be addressed. I know some of you work for companies with skin in the game. Some committee members work for organizations and companies that have an interest in shaping policy here. You may think I haven't noticed, but I'm not naive. And don't think the people of Emeryville do not recognize when power is being wielded for profit versus when it's being exercised for the public good. But I almost, but I know that most of you are here because you want to serve. I'm asking the majority of you, those who have no ulterior motive but to serve, to be more than placeholders, be innovators, be disruptors of dysfunction. Break the routine that says we must fly this city on autopilot, because if you don't speak up, someone else will speak for you, and often, it will be to assign blame. And the decisions we make together, whether it's a housing overlay, a zoning variance, or a capital improvement project, are not checkboxes. They are coordinates. They are course corrections. They are life or death for working families, renters, elders on fixed incomes, and the people who struggle to make Emeryville home. When Emeryville fell into fiscal disrepair, a former colleague of mine didn't take responsibility. He pointed at you. He pointed at the Planning Commission. He pointed at this very body, because that's what bad pilots do. But this isn't a speech about bad pilots. This is about the cost of inaction from the copilot. You sit in that seat, and you stay silent. You see something and say nothing. You rubber stamp instead of recalibrate, then you are not a copilot, you are a part of the crash. So here's my challenge. Stop being polite passengers. Start being fierce copilots. And so today, I'm not here to scold, I'm here to dare. Dare to be the copilots this city never knew it needed. Speak up early, raise the uncomfortable. And when you sense something is off, say, "Go around." And if that makes a meeting longer, good. And good is the nice term that I want to use. If that makes challenging, means challenging a council member, do it. If that means rocking a boat to save the plane, rock it. Just these very words are making a lot of people uncomfortable, but I'm doing it anyway, because that's what public advocacy is about. I dare you to be the best copilots this city has ever seen. I dare you to hold us accountable, not only when it's easy, but when it's uncomfortable. I dare you to use your voice to reroute us when we're flying into storms we can't yet see. Because when the next wave of displacement hits, when the next budget crisis comes, when another black family gets priced out, or another small business shuts down, no one is going to care how polite your minutes were. They're going to ask, "Where were you, and did you see it coming? Why didn't you say go around?" I close with this. Because the people of Emeryville, residents, workers, families, they're already strapped in. They've entrusted us with their safety, their future, and their identity that we don't drift course. They're depending on all of us to land this flight safely, all of us, no matter the turbulence ahead. So serve boldly, ask better questions, demand data, interrupt groupthink. Let this be the greatest history lesson for the story of Emeryville. So, you know, as we continue to the other committees, you know, I welcome you all who were mostly just appointing everyone who, we have slots for everyone. But I, you know, I just want to say thank you for staying on this journey. I do believe in your better angels. If I didn't, I wouldn't be here. I couldn't do what I do if I didn't have hope. But let's just fly this city with clarity, courage, and a commitment to every soul on board, and land with integrity. And may we never forget that silence in the cockpit is sometimes the loudest sound of all. Thank you.
We have a motion on the Commission on Aging. Do we have a second?
I think so.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have Appointments to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have four applications and four vacancies. I will now open public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment for EDAC? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I move approval of all applicants, where the time duration stated in the resolution.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Just a clarification. I think one of the, one of the spots is through 2026, and the rest are through 2027. So if it's amenable with you, I'd suggest that Rob Fong, the non-incumbent, to the slot through 2026, just to...
I'm agreeable to that.
Do you modify?
Yes. I modify my motion to state the following, what Member Solomon stated.
I'll, I'll second the amended motion.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Parks and Rec Committee. We have four spots and four applicants, two of which are incumbents. I will now open public comment for Parks and Rec. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I can move resolution of the City Council of City of Emeryville appointing Calvin Darcy, Colin McClure, Carlin Darcy, Colin McClure, Nicholas Robert, and Jordan Wax to the Parks and Rec Committee for the term commencing July 1, 2025, and ending July 30th, June 30th, 2027, and amending the local roster of boards, commissions, and committees accordingly.
Member Welch.
Point of clarification, Madam Clerk, maybe you could help with this. Would Madam Vice Mayor need to state in her motion to have Commissioner Jordan Wax potentially represent for the Planning Commission, since he is the one applicant for the Planning Commission, or is her resolution, or is her motion fine for how she stated it?
He is the only Planning Commissioner on there, so he would serve in, in that position. So I think it's fine. Thank you, though.
And that, because I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Public Art Committee. And we have five vacancies and five applicants, including four incumbents. I will now open public comment for Public Art Committee. Are there any member, any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Welcome, you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Eric Enriquez, and the last time I was in this room, my company, ABTR Group, was appointed the grant to build the Rotten City Cultural District here for two years. So we have been tedious in trying to highlight the artists and the rich culture here that Emeryville has, and it's been such a pleasure and an honor to get to know the insights and announce of what came from Emeryville and what Emeryville can be and will be in the future, and having a part of that. I was also able to be part of the Bus Shelter panel, which was really exciting. And so I was encouraged to apply for the Public Art Committee. I used to live in the city for 14 years, two years in Oakland, and I've been in Emeryville for two years. And being able to understand what Emeryville is aside from Bay Street and IKEA has been such a pleasure, and kind of demystifying what's behind closed doors here. And so I'm really excited to be part of the committee and, and show everybody what that looks like.
Thank you, Erica. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I can move resolution of the City Council of City of Emeryville appointing Ronald Davis. And how many do we need for the 20 through 27?
There are three, Madam Vice Mayor.
Three for 20 through 27? I'm sorry, 25 through 27?
Yeah, three of them for a two-year term and two of them for a three-year term.
Okay, so I will choose the first three. Ronald Davis, Enriquez, David Riddle Huber for the term ending in June 30th, 2027, and appointing the remaining, Taryn Walker and Judith Wetterer to serve for the term ending June 30th, 2028, and amending the local roster of boards, commissions, and committees accordingly.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And last, we have the ACTC Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee. This is the only committee for which we have one opening, and we've received two applicants, including the incumbent, John Suter. So for this one, I would like to invite both applicants to come forward and say a bit about themselves and why they would like to serve on this committee. Maybe we can start with the new applicant, Tucci Yanarko. Do we have Tucci Yanarko? I don't see Tucci here. I'll now ask John Suter to come and speak to why he'd like to be reappointed to the committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'm John Suter, and I request reappointment to PAPCO, which is the short way of saying that long line, name of what we are doing, the Paratransit Advisory Planning Committee. I want to continue my work. You probably, you that are involved in the county transportation probably have, have listened to some of the meeting notes or meetings, and you recognize that I have been known for pressing the better use of Measure B and BB funds, because cities tend to just let them sit there. And, and so I am constantly trying to leverage my professional experience of advancing the return on invested capital for disabled and senior transportation. I'm impressed and proud that our city is an example of excellent paratransit services, growth, and use of electric vehicles in the county. In addition, I'd like to commend Kim Burrows for her direction of our city's progressive efforts. As she is retiring, I trust her replacement will continue the forward-looking use of capital grants received. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I would now like to ask if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I can make the motion to appoint John Suter for the advisory, for the AC Paratransit Advisory Planning Committee, and amending the roster accordingly.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The time is 7:04, and this meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
The time is 7:15. This is a regular meeting of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Councilmember Solomon?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Present.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
Motion to approve the final agenda?
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Members, do we have any ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none, we will now move to public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Welcome. You'll have two minutes.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Nice to see you again, Councilmember Welch. My name's Tom Ferreira. I'm ER tech over at Summit Hospital, just down the street from here. I've been there 10 years. I'm speaking on behalf of Sutter's closing of Berkeley campus. Big hospital, same ER size as ours, but they're going to be closing it. And they're going to be building the hospital here in your city, a smaller hospital, smaller beds. So I'm just concerned about the future of your constituents, Berkeley, Oakland, everybody that's nearby here. They're going to have to go to Summit. We're already crowded in the ER as it is. And then having a double amount of ER staff, ER people there to take care of, it's going to be overwhelming. And currently with Emeryville, they, Sutter says they're going to build this in 2033 and be finished. So that's eight years. But then we have Sutter is building a cancer treatment center with 60 beds at our campus from dirt up, and they're finishing that in two years. It's going to be done in November 26th next year. So I don't know what the delay is. It shouldn't be a delay. Your constituents, everybody deserves the right to have healthcare. We're, and especially LND, especially that. LND is the only one in Alameda County that we send all our rigs to. I used to be on the 911 ambulance force for Alameda County for 22 years, so that was the main place to go. So I just, I have a lot of concern about their proposal about building the smaller hospital in your town. It should be a bigger hospital, not smaller.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Welcome. You have two minutes.
Good afternoon. Good to see you again, Mayor, council members. Doug Jones, political organizer from SCIU UHW. To put a point on what Brother Tom just mentioned is that the statement that they've made to the San Francisco Chronicle about wanting to complete a new hospital here in Emeryville by the year 2033 becomes problematic when you look at the fact that the current hospital that they're operating in Berkeley cannot operate past the year 2030 without a rebuild or retrofit because it's not seismically compliant. So if there is a three-year lag time between the period of time in which hundreds of beds in Berkeley become nonoperational and the completion of the rebuild here, obviously we might be tremendously short on inpatient beds and that the timeliness of the rebuilding of a hospital here becomes very important. Unfortunately, Sutter Health has not submitted itself to, you know, any examination of, you know, what its plans are up to and including having conversations with the workers that are represented by both SCIU UHW and the California Nurses Association. In a circumstance like this, it's very routine for the employer who's, you know, doing a rebuild of a hospital to meet and confer with its contracted employees when there's a circumstance like this. Since Sutter announced these plans back in January, again, in a private meeting with a healthcare reporter for the San Francisco Chronicle, they have refused to meet with us despite our wish for them to meet with us so we can discuss this. Concerned us greatly. That's why you're going to continue to hear from us and other members of the public about the importance of doing this rebuild right. So thank you for hearing from us, and we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we'll now move to the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have one action item today, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville as successor agency, increasing contingency amount for the FMW site demolition and excavation project. Is there a staff presentation for this item?
If you'd like to weigh presentation, we can do that. This overall has been technically approved back in January through the ROPS, the funding for this additional cost for the change orders. So if you'd like it, we do have our consultant available to do a short presentation for you.
Thank you for clarifying. Members, are you amenable to waiving presentation?
I think it would be beneficial for the public to have the short presentation.
Okay, let's have the presentation.
So let me introduce our consultant with EKI, Earl James. He'll be presenting for you.
Good evening. I've been coming to these meetings since about 1998. Our original work with the City of Emeryville Redevelopment Agency at that time was for what's now Bay Street, to do the environmental cleanup of that particular site. So this FMW project is kind of the end game of a lot of work through a lot of years. In this case, we're talking about the former Marchant Whitney site. And maybe next slide? We've been working through a process for about 14 years on this, that kind of the main document that describes the work we're doing is called a remedial action plan, which was approved by the Department of Toxic Substances Control. We've been implementing the elements of that rap, of which the first element was the demolition of the former warehouse that was on the property, and then excavation of soil generally down to a depth of five feet and in one area to a depth of 10 feet. And so we're going to just talk quickly about the project, where we're at, and then we can talk about the change orders that are summarized in this amount of money. Next slide, please. FMW site is located down the street, right next to Horton Landing Park. Next slide. These are the elements of the remediation project that's being implemented. The first, as I said, was the demolition of the warehouse that was on the site and soil excavation, which we're finishing up at this point. Next, end of this year into next year, we'll be beginning thermal treatment and in-situ extraction of groundwater. We're bringing in 2.5 megawatts of electricity to put into 100 wells that'll be in the ground down to a depth of about 60 feet and boil the volatile organic chemicals that are in groundwater there that were released as a part of the Marchant calculating machine operations to build mechanical calculating machines and then a valve company that was there that made metal valves. And after that will be periods of time of monitoring and perhaps some additional in-the-ground work. Next slide, please. Timeline, successor agency approved the bid package for this excavation work, the Phase One, back in June of 2023. Bids were received and ICS Innovation Innovative Construction Solutions was the lowest responsible bidder. The agency approved their base contract, which was based on the bid of 7.5 million, and a contingency amount which we knew about at that time for some soils that got identified between the time we did the plan and when the project got going that are going to cost an extra $1.28 million to dispose of. Permitting went on, and they mobilized the site and began the demolition and soil excavation work in the 28th of May of 2024. And today, actually, I think, next slide, well, we're still talking about dollars. Today was the last day of excavation. We finished the soil excavation work today. So the site will start getting put back together for the next phases of work. So this was the original base contract of 7.5 million and that original 1.28 million contingency for the disposal of PCB-impacted soils. Next slide. This is just a quick kind of run-through of the last year. This is the building demolition of that big warehouse that was there. Next slide. We've had to pull up all the concrete that covered the top of the site. Next slide, please. Then we had to put up a big tent and the highly impacted soils with the VOCs. We excavated inside a tent, and you can see in this picture off to the left, there's a couple of pipes that come out of the tent and go to the big shipping containers that are full of carbon. And we pulled the air out of the tent as we were digging, ran the air across carbon to capture those volatile organic chemicals before they were released to the air so that we protected the neighborhood while we were working. Inside the tent, people were working and supplied air, sort of like scuba divers with tanks, because it was a dangerous atmosphere to be breathing while they were doing the digging. That was finished. Next slide, please. And today, we finished the soil excavation. And next slide, we're backfilling and grading the site at this point. It'll then be, take another few months to finish installing some utilities, stormwater treatment systems and so forth. And then it'll be asphalted generally, landscaping around the edges. Building's going to be put up that'll hold our multi-phase extraction system, the groundwater extraction and treatment system. And then after that, the thermal system will come in, which is a temporary setup, and 120 wells will get drilled. So this fall into early next year, there'll be a lot of drilling out there and setting up all that equipment to start boiling the chemicals out of the ground and treating them. Next slide, please. Stormwater treatment facilities will be installed as part of that process of putting the site back together, and that'll stay there long term. Next slide, please. And site restoration and paving. Next slide, please. So these are the major change order items. For a lot of little items, the one big one for that soil disposal, for the TOSCO, which is Toxic Substances Control Act, which regulates PCB handling. And in total, it added up to the $2.471 million of the change order that we're requesting here to be approved. Next slide. These are, again, just more of the individual items that added up to that sum. It's a lot of little changes that couldn't be seen when we set up the bidding. Nothing particularly large. We did change the grading plan there, item 26, changed so that we put the site into a more permanent condition, which was dictated by the fact that we needed to put our treatment equipment in a building to do sound control, to meet our CEQA requirements for sound control, because it's kind of noisy equipment. It's got a big fans that pull the air out of the ground. And so that was a big-ticket item on there. One more slide? So there's the total of those contingencies that we're asking to have approved tonight. Questions?
Members, any questions?
First of all, congratulations on completing the, having it done today.
Yes.
Really happy about that, because it's such a large amount. And we have had these kind of, you know, things to do, deal with over the last year where we have had big amounts. So it is important, I think, for the public to know. I am just wanting a clarifying question. There is something in the resolution here that says, "Unauthorizing the executive director to approve and execute change orders." Is this only for this one, this particular $2,4,071,345.60? Is it just for the items here, or is it something beyond this?
It's just for those items there, yeah. We already had authority for the 1.2 million. Now it's the additional 2 points.
There's an additional for this. I will make the motion for the resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency, increasing the contingency amount for the FMW site demolition and excavation project, CIP number 23, EPW 003, by an additional $2,471,345.60, and authorizing the executive director to approve and execute the change orders.
Second. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The time is 7:32. This meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:32. This is the regular city council meeting for the city council in Emeryville. Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still seated. Members, do we have a motion to approve the final agenda?
I'll move to approve the final agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have special orders of the day. First, we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth Freedom Day in the City of Emeryville. Whereas June 19th, 2025, is declared as Juneteenth Freedom Day, a nationally recognized day which celebrates the rich culture, legacy, and heritage of Black and African-American people. And 2025 marks the 160th year of Juneteenth Freedom Day, with Juneteenth being the oldest known celebration commemorating the abolition of slavery in the United States, dating back to June 19th, 1865, when Union soldiers, led by Major General Gordon Granger, arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended, freeing the enslaved. And this was two and a half years after President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which became official on January 1st, 1863. And the United States Congress between 1865 and 1870 would pass key amendments to the US Constitution that upon ratification by each state would profoundly change the legal status of those once enslaved. The Thirteenth Amendment abolished bonded servitude. The Fourteenth Amendment conferred citizenship upon those once enslaved. Finally, the Fifteenth Amendment enfranchised men once held in bondage. And today, Juneteenth Freedom Day celebrates Black and African-American people's freedoms and achievements while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures as it takes a more national, symbolic, and global perspective to ensure the events of 1865 are not forgotten. And the observance of Juneteenth honors the history and perseverance of Black and African-American people and celebrates America's progress and continuing commitment to realizing the principles of liberty, equality upon which our nation was founded, and now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville, that June 19th, 2025, is proclaimed Juneteenth Freedom Day, and the community is called upon to redouble its commitment to use its power to stamp out hate, racism, inequities, and continue the work of equity, justice, and hope, as proclaimed by the May- justice, and hope, as proclaimed by the mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at the regular meeting held Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. And I'd like to invite any members of council who would like to add their own comments to, please do so. Members, are there anything you would like to add?
I will.
Member Welch.
I would just want to say, as a Black woman here in California, the descendant of individuals that were enslaved and actually escaped slavery and made their way to Galesburg, Illinois, where my grandmother was born, who recently passed. This Juneteenth represents so much that is so pertinent today, especially dealing with the current federal administration. So much of it is about resilience, about the inequity finding out two years after the fact that you were, in fact, a free person, and the news was not delivered to you on purpose. It carries a heavy weight for many Black Americans, but it's a day of reflection, it's a day of remembrance, but also, for us, especially growing up here in the Bay Area, it's always been a time of celebration. It's a celebration of freedom, it's a celebration of our ancestors, and it's a time for us to come together as a community and celebrate how resilient we still are and how we stand on the shoulders of our ancestors and their work and their perseverance. And this past weekend, we had our own Juneteenth celebration. We had the Black Fashion Expo at Bay Street. Berkeley has their annual, I think they might be, if it's not 45 years, they might be pushing it, Juneteenth celebration. And it was just, it just reinvigorates me as a Black woman to be amongst my community, especially everything that we're all going through right now. And there's so much fear, and there's so much worry, but to just have those two days, to have that weekend, to just reconnect and just reconfirm our commitment to ourselves and our community and being a part of a city that long before it was recognized as a federal holiday, celebrated Juneteenth, and that Emeryville is always and annually recommits itself to its Black residents, to Black Californians. It feels very special to be a part of a community that does so. And so just, those are my comments. And just thank you to my colleagues, as always, for their support for this resolution.
Thank you, Member Welch. Any other comments? Member Pryforce.
I just want to recognize Juneteenth as a recognized holiday, especially for our workers, our laborers, our unions, who are always fighting for Juneteenth to be recognized and be a part of the bargaining. And I'm just glad that Emeryville recognizes that and has supported that as it relates to it being a day that workers can spend time with their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. And I just wanted to add a note, kind of echoing what Member Welch said, kind of about the importance to this day. I think Juneteenth doesn't just serve to remind, help us remember what I think many would recall as a painful past, but it's a reminder of the dignity and rights that we do need to uphold every day. And I think that's increasingly prescient even for today, events going on today. Next, we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, recognizing June 21st, 2025, as International Yoga Day. Whereas yoga is an ancient, physical, mental, and spiritual practice originating in India and embraced globally for its benefits in promoting health, mindfulness, balance, and harmony. And the United Nations General Assembly declared June 21st as International Yoga Day in 2014, acknowledging yoga's wide-reaching potential for enhancing holistic well-being. And the official theme for the 11th International Yoga Day on June 21st, 2025, is Yoga for One Earth, One Health, highlighting the interconnectedness of personal fitness, mental health, and planetary well-being. Scientific research shows that regular yoga practice can improve physical fitness, alleviate stress and anxiety, support mental clarity and emotional resilience, and elevate the overall quality of life across all ages and abilities. And the City of Emeryville values community wellness, environmental consciousness, and sustainable practices that benefit both individuals and the planet. And observing that International Yoga Day with its, this theme, offers an opportunity to deepen public awareness of how mindful movement aligns with environmental stewardship and global health. And the City affirms yoga's role in advancing its objectives of public health, social inclusion, environmental awareness, and holistic resilience, and now therefore be by the City of, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville, that June 21st, 2025, is recognized as International Yoga Day, Yoga for One Earth, One Health, and urges all residents, visitors, and community partners to practice, celebrate, and promote yoga in ways that honor its cultural roots while reinforcing its commitment to personal and planetary well-being. And be it further resolved that the City supports organizing and hosting events, educational programs, classes, and environmental activities in conjunction with this theme to foster greater community engagement, unity, and mindful care for earth, proclaimed by the mayor of the City Council of the City of Emeryville at the regular meeting held Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. Next, we have announcement of commission and committee vacancies.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I just wanted to let you know that we had one resignation from the Commission on Aging this last week.
Thank you, April. Councilmembers, do we have any special announcements or reports on meeting attendance? Seeing none, next is the City Manager's Report.
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Next, we have ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment on the consent agenda or items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on this item? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Philip Tost, an associate civil engineer with Public Works. I started with the city last August, my decision driven in part by the three-day-a-week telework schedule. It spoke to the city's commitment to reducing traffic congestion and air pollution while helping increase employees' work-life balance, which made me happy to join the team. So I'm concerned about potential reductions in telework days. I'm more productive with the quiet focus that working from home offers. There's also time and cost savings associated with not commuting. I understand the pressure to follow other more conservative cities that are returning to the office, but why do we want to be like them? Yes, some agencies are reducing telework, but some are not. Hayward is now keeping their policy, which allows up to three days a week telework. City of Alameda policy requires only two days a week in the office. Other local agencies don't specify a number of telework days, leaving those decisions to department heads. All these agencies recognize that a flexible telework policy is a key retention and recruitment tool. It's something that Emeryville, with a employee vacancy rate of 11%, should champion and not restrict. Emeryville is known for punching above its weight, excelling regionally in so many areas. Why not embrace a progressive telework policy and be a paragon of environmentally friendly and innovative employment practices? We've shown that we can be connected virtually while being successful and productive. Most of Public Works staff here at City Hall use all three days of telework. I'm concerned this change will alienate staff that have come to rely on this current policy. The city will lose longtime employees, their institutional knowledge, and the relationships these workers have with local residents and businesses. This loss will inevitably result in reduced services and exacerbate and overloaded staff. We need a new telework policy. Working under the emergency order is untenable.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good evening, Council. I'm Ryan O'Connell, senior civil engineer in Public Works, project manager for many of our city's largest transportation projects. I'm one piece of your tiny but mighty workforce, where many of us wear multiple hats to meet our community's high-quality expectations. For the past four years, many city staff have thrived under a hybrid work schedule of two days in office and three days remote. This isn't an experiment, it's a productive reality that many have built their lives around. It's how we've delivered on projects and secured nearly $40 million in grant funds for council priorities and Public Works alone, a crucial achievement during a budget crisis. My concern tonight is the new proposal to change our hybrid work policy. It may sound progressive compared to some federal-state RTO mandates, but for the staff who have made this city successful for the past four years, it's a significant step backwards. This change directly impacts us, your tiny but mighty staff. Many of us cannot afford to live in the community we serve, undertaking supercommutes for more affordable areas. The current three remote days significantly reduce the financial and time burden of these long commutes. Our profession, like many, has fundamentally shifted towards remote collaboration. We used to encourage significant travel expenses and time for consultant teams to meet in person. Now we efficiently collaborate on platforms like Teams, resolving complex project issues much quicker and saving taxpayer dollars. This isn't just about staff preference, it's about fiscal responsibility. Our consultant meeting held remotely saves taxpayer dollars and travel and time. Shifting away from this working system will hurt morale, especially when productivity is high. More critically, a change in our hybrid model jeopardize our ability to retain and recruit. Our smaller city, we can't, as a smaller city, we can't always match sellers in specialized roles of larger neighbors. Our current flexibility has been a key differentiator in attracting skilled professionals, whether it's engineers, planners, or housing experts. A restrictive citywide mandate cripples this vital tool and sends a message that we're becoming less employee-friendly, especially when we see great flexible policies like at MTC in the City of Hayward. We urge you to empower our department heads, those who best understand our team's needs. Allow them the discretion to establish schedules.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Amber Evans. This December, I'll have my 15-year anniversary with the city. You've indicated to us that you want to be exemplary employers, but with IT and EDH vacancies, I'm currently surrounded by boxes, not people. At a 10% loss of staff in City Hall, we've made the pace feel desolate, not work from home. Emeryville's a national leader in labor standards, from its highest minimum wage to its innovative Fair Work Week. You can apply this leadership to your own staff, or you can go the way of Hayward with conflict and reduce morale, fighting over the number of days we must be in the office, and there in the end, top management being tossed out, all in the hopes of making Thursdays in City Hall, now quiet, seem a little less quiet, maybe like a Tuesday. But staff will still make meetings on Zoom or Teams to accommodate consultants, granters, vendors, and other agencies. We may decimate our Public Works Department, where seven full-time employees could find changes in their work-from-home situation unacceptable, pushing some to seek more accommodating, nearer, or better-paying positions. Further, those with the longest commute, three of them, were the only ones to leave initially. The remaining may be pushed out, or become disenfranchised as they're crushed by doubling of their workload, or dropping of projects such as grant writing, Fortia Streetscape, Ashby, Sutter Review, and the website updates, gutting city goals. A new employee told me that he thought Emeryville had nothing to compete on. He said, "Not money, flexibility, or culture." I thought Emeryville culture was a cut above the most, more bureaucratic cities I've worked in, with negative feedback loops. But I fear the approach.
Thank you for your comment.
Is mitigate the disaster.
Any other members of the public? Next, we have the consent calendar. Members, do we have a motion on the consent items?
I'll move to approve the consent items.
Madam Clerk, the role?
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have item 11.1. This is a public hearing on the introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting the second major amendment to the Public Market Development Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Chad Smalley, your Community Development Director. I have a slide deck for you. Here we go. Here to discuss, as you mentioned, Marketplace Redevelopment Development Agreement Amendment. If we can go right to the next slide. I'll provide some background first, because this project has a pretty long history. Back in 2008, a PUD/DP, that stands for Planned Unit Development, Preliminary Development Plan, was approved for the overall marketplace development. Through 2015 and 2016, various, the Development Agreement, or DAs, I'm going to refer to it from now on, and FDPs, or Final Development Plans, were approved for various buildings. Parcel A received a residential, approval for a multifamily residential project. Parcel B was parking and retail in this version of the plan. Parcel C1 was the grocery store. That's been built and is now occupied by Upside Foods. Parcel C2 and D are the Avalon Residential, both the wrap of the Upside Foods slash grocery store and parking structure, as well as the project to the north, known as Avalon. And then Parcel E was Christie Park, and that, of course, has been complete as well. So Parcel A and B were not built, but they did have FDPs approved for them. In 2020, a new set of FDPs was approved for Parcel B, and that included 150,000-square-foot research and development building. Then in 2021, Oxford Properties acquired the, effectively the whole site, Parcells A, B, F, and the Public Market Food Hall itself. Next slide, please. So that brings us to the picture we have on the screen here today. Parcel A is currently a parking lot and is right at the foot of the bridge that goes over the railroad line. And that's, was approved for residential, then later reentitled, which I'll get into, and currently is a parking lot. Parcel B is fenced off and is vacant currently. Where I just left off this narrative, it had 150,000-square-foot R&amp;D building. The rest of what you see there was built, except for Parcel F, which currently has no FDP nor any other kind of entitlement and is not part of this discussion. Next slide, please. So after Oxford bought this property, in October 2022, the PUD was amended, and the DA was amended through the first major amendment of the Development Agreement, and FDPs were approved for parking and retail instead of residential on Parcel A. 421,000 square feet of research and development space on Parcel B. And in order to make this work, the obligation to build affordable housing units, which was enshrined in the DA prior to this amendment, was transferred to Parcel F. And as part of this grand bargain, developer was required to contribute $20 million to the city's Affordable Housing Fund and pedestrianize market drive during business hours. And effectively, what I'm describing here is the city traded $20 million for residential on Parcel A, plus some other tweaks around the margins. Next slide, please. So that's what's entitled now. On the screen in front of you to the right is Parcel A, which is a parking structure with a bridge and staircase that comes down and connects to Shell Mount. In the middle is a park with a pavilion building on it. And then the large 425,000-square-foot Research and Development Tower is on the left-hand side of the screen. And of course, none of this has yet been built, but this is what's entitled right now. Next slide. So about that $20 million, the way that that works in the Development Agreement is 10 million was due on June 30th of 2023, and then 3.3 million, or really, really a third of the remaining amount, was due in each of the following successive three years on June 30th, so '24, '25, and '26. If the project moves forward, those two entitled buildings that we just saw, then the portion of that $20 million that's attributable to the Affordable Housing Impact Fee, which memory serves as a little shy of $3 million, is due at the building permit issuance with the is due at the building permit issuance, with the balance, everything outstanding, due at temporary certificate of occupancy for either of those non-residential buildings. And so those two thresholds obviously have not been met, and only the timeframes have been rolling since this was adopted. Next slide, please. So beginning in March, Oxford approached the city and was interested in revisiting this trade that we made, $20 million to not build housing. This is because of the market realities, in that there is not a tremendous amount of leasing activity happening right now around the research and development space, and you just saw a 421,000-square-foot building. There's a very shallow pool indeed of folks that are willing and able to take on that kind of space. So what's in front of you today is this proposed amendment, which would extend the term of the existing Development Agreement from what currently expires in January of 2028 to March, February 2020, I'm sorry, of 2029, in order to accommodate the things I'm about to talk about, the entitlements. As part of this, the payments that would be told or paused that are outstanding and yet do, and in exchange, Oxford would agree to actually move forward on entitling residential products for Parcel A and evaluate a residential product on Parcel B with specific deadlines as follows. On December 1st of this year, Oxford would be required to submit plans with sufficient level of detail for us to hold a Planning Commission Study Session, which is the normal first step for a project of this size. By December of the following year, they would submit their actual application for the FDP for that residential project. On the following year, December again, or nine months from the approval of the Final Development Plan, they would submit the application for the building permit to actually build that project. And then the following year in December, or 12 months from when that building permit is issued, or is approved, we would issue the building permit and pay all the fees associated with it. Next slide, please. In addition, on Parcel B, which is currently the vacant fenced-off lot, by December, the same deadline by which they submit their project for Parcel A, they would submit a pro forma feasibility analysis about residential product on Parcel B, and we specifically asked that that include ownership housing, a condo project or townhome, whatever is most feasible, something that is an ownership project. We want to understand the market environment for that and understand why we have not seen an ownership project in quite some time, and that we think this will help us answer some of those questions. If there is found to be feasible to build residential on that project, then the following milestones would kick in: submit for a study session by June of '26, by March of '27, a Final Development Plan application, and then each successive March, building permit application and building permit pulled in March of '29, which corresponds to the term extension that I started with when we started talking about these amendments. Next slide, please. So while all this is going on, the Parcel A housing fee that's outstanding would be told and indexed to those milestones. So if those things don't occur by December of this year, that payment that was due on the 30th of June would not be due until the end of December of this year. If the FDP application is not submitted by December of next year, then that payment that was due in June of next year would be due in December of the following year. In other words, the payments are paused so long as they are meeting the milestones that I just outlined above. Even for the payments that are paused, though, those payments will increase by 4%. That amount representing, on an annualized basis, that amount represents what the city would have earned on that in its local agency investment fund, approximately, trying to account for the time value of money. If these deadlines are missed and the payment comes in six months later, that money buys less unless it's escalated by some amount, and that 4% figure is put into this amendment. If Oxford proceeds with a non-residential project and doesn't build the houses there, all of the fees are due at application for that building permit. This is different from how the agreement is currently arranged, which says that when they apply, they pay for just the portion that's outstanding because of the, which in effect, they've already paid because of the prior payments that they've made to date, just the portion for impact fees. But then they don't pay the rest of it until the occupancy is established for the building. So under this arrangement, if they do move forward with that non-residential project, it all comes in. And finally, if they do deliver the residential project, then they get a credit for all of the fees that they have paid, all of that $20 million net of whatever the impact fee that they would have had to pay anyway. So effectively, this is a long, roundabout way of unwinding this trade that I mentioned at the outset. We traded $20 million to not build housing. This says, "Well, if you do build housing, we'll unwind that $20 million and give it back. But if you don't actually get those milestones made, that $20 million is going to increase." So, next slide, please. So what this does is it unwinds that trade. It provides an option for residential on Parcells A and B, when B was never entitled for residential in the first place, so that is a bonus. Parcel A's housing fee currently, those parts that have been paid and are projected to be paid, those haven't been programmed to any project at all. There isn't any project waiting for those funds. And, and this may be the most salient point, those funds that go into the city's Affordable Housing Fund are for the city to build its affordable housing projects, and it's extraordinarily expensive for the city to do so, both because of the other funding sources that have to be assembled and the amount of time involved. $20 million today, not yet programmed to a project, even if programmed to a project, is years away from, longer than the term of this Development Agreement, from actually being able to deliver units that can be occupied. Next slide, please. So, for Development Agreement Amendments, these are done by ordinance, and they require a Planning Commission recommendation prior to a review by the City Council. We took this to the Planning Commission on May 22. They unanimously recommended approval, noting, interestingly, that some of the commissioners didn't really like the trade in the first place, that they would have preferred that residential be built along with the project as originally envisioned. And for that reason, and for everything that I've just outlined, we are recommending that you waive first reading and introduce this ordinance by title only, which would approve the second major amendment to the Development Agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions. I went through that fast in the interest of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this. We also have representatives from Oxford here if you have any questions specifically for them.
Thank you, Chad. Members, do you have any questions? Member Pryforce.
Thank you, Chad, for your presentation. So, and I'm considering using the language as it has been an investment. Money that we're not collecting is money that could be used towards ownership housing possibilities. Let's just say, you know, they finally move forward with it. Are there opportunities for us to determine whether or not that ownership housing is something that could be affordable and accessible to families and not just, let's say, one entity with a big pocket to be able to just buy up all the units and then rent those units?
I think there's a lot of room for conversation around what an ownership project could be. And we currently don't have that space to have that conversation in the current, the way this is currently arranged. So yeah, I think there is room for those kinds of conversations. I'm particularly interested in that facet of this arrangement, is getting in under the hood of what it takes to build ownership housing. I want to see, what is the delta? What are the big stumbling blocks? And is there a way for the city, through its resources, through its housing bond or other means, to perhaps close that gap? That's a conversation I'm anxious to have. And this arrangement provides a venue for it to occur in.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I just had, oh, Member Pryforce, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, can we hear from Oxford? Say, you know, if there's any thoughts that they have about this project, or if you want me to ask a specific question, I can do that.
No, that's fine, yeah. If you have questions for Oxford, you can ask them.
So are you for real, for real?
Well, start off by thanking you for your time, Councilmembers, Mayor. Mark McGowan, I oversee development for Oxford Properties. And so, and a special thanks to staff for allowing this conversation to happen, because, so to take a step back, we represent the pension members in Ontario, Ontario, Canada, so the municipal employees, firefighters and civil workers up in Ontario. So we carry the burden of action. We want something to happen. So as we were digesting what was going on in the economy, we wanted to have some flexibility to, as Chad mentioned, explore what is possible. So this proposal hopefully buys us a little time to do that exploration, to have a conversation, and hopefully deliver some solutions to activate these last two sites.
So I'll just, thank you. I'll just say that when I moved into Emeryville, it was a condo that I rented, but eventually moved into a rental unit that was owned by a pension. And then, and then they sold the building, and now we have a corporate landlord, and it's been kind of downhill since then. And so, based on who you all represent, the scope of the project, and the fact that there is a possibility for ownership housing, I am very excited. A lot of people are excited. There probably are going to be a lot of questions coming your way as this develops, but I just hope that you all just stick to that landing. And yeah, and thank you.
Thank you, Member Pryforce. I just had one comment to add. I was on the Planning Commission when the original proposal was approved. And on one hand, this makes a lot of sense, looking at housing. On the other hand, it feels a little bittersweet. I used to show people the picture of that park and the pollinator garden, and it was so thoughtful and beautiful, at least in the renderings. So I'm curious, are you guys looking at preserving the park?
I think it's all on the table, Mayor. We haven't started drawing. We just want to start to explore program and what is possible, because if we can come up with a program that gets financing, then we'll be in a better position to deliver on those promises.
Great. I'm looking forward to that conversation. Thank you. Members, any other questions or comments? Okay, next, we have, we'll be opening the public hearing on this item. The time is 8:08. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any members of the public for this item? Seeing no members of the public, the time is 8:09. The public hearing is closed. I'll bring this back to Council for discussion or a motion. And could we get the recommendation slide back up? We have a motion to read by title only.
I will second.
Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr. And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor Mora. Waiving first reading and introducing by title only, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville adopting the second major amendment to Public Market Development Agreement, also known as the Marketplace Redevelopment Project, to postpone payment of housing fees to allow the applicant opportunity to obtain planning and building permits for a potential housing project on Parcells A and B, to extend the term of the Development Agreement and other related amendments, APN numbers 449-1556-15-16-17 and -24, secret determination exempt pursuant to state secret guidelines, Section 15332 and 15061, subsection B, subsection 3. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the first reading, second. Madam Clerk, the roll.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Councilmember Solomon.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Mora.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have one action item. This is the Active Transportation Plan First Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm very pleased to be here to present our first annual Active Transportation Plan Report. So, just a little bit of background, a little bit of refresher, since it's been a whole year. The ATP has six goals, 11 policy recommendations, five program recommendation areas, and four project maps, where we're trying to track a little bit the progress of how this plan is doing. When we went through plan adoption, it was unanimous, as we went through, that B-PAC, Transportation Committee, Planning Commission, City Council, all said, "Hey, can you come back and check in with us? How is this going? Is this working? Are we making any progress? Like, what's going on with it?" Which is great, because our plans shouldn't be sitting on our shelves. Our plans should be active, if you will. And with that direction to come back, there wasn't much specificity. So if you have requests for how to go about this next year, or have ideas and feedback on ways you'd like this reported, definitely let me know at the end of the presentation. Next slide. So this is us taking our first try at how to best report on our progress. So, the Active Transportation Plan is a blueprint for improving the active transportation infrastructure in Emeryville over 10 years, focusing on projects that will have the most impact for improving safety, comfort, and mobility. And I'll see those words coming up a couple times. So the ATP was developed over nearly three years. Our public participation was outstanding for the scope of such a small city. So over 1,300 participants, multiple engagement activities, 16 public meetings. All of this just drew in a bunch of people, all sorts of community members, from people who live here, from people who work here, from people who come here to play. Next slide. So the vision is, Emeryville is a community where active, sustainable transportation is the easy choice. Safe, comfortable, equitable, and accessible to all. These vision statements were developed with the input from B-PAC and other committees and bodies that I mentioned earlier, but especially B-PAC, who have like 12 meetings about this overall. Next slide. So progress on these. For the goals, these are more qualitative items. So we weren't able to measure them numerically, so what we did is went to B-PAC and said, "What do you think? How is this going?" And these are the comments that we got from B-PAC. Comfortable. Are we more comfortable than a year ago? And B-PAC said that we've made amazing progress in one year, that we're doing things right, exemplifying Horton Street, and that there's been more progress for bikes and less for pedestrians, but the general trajectory is in the right way. Next. For connected, that we have great facilities, the bridge, the Greenway, Doyle Street, that we're connecting people to places with big projects versus intersections, approaching that slightly differently. But again, the trajectory is going in the right way. For joyful, clean, pride, social relationships, maintenance, happy, we're always, that people in B-PAC describe joyful. Joyful is up, was one of my favorite comments from that meeting. And equitable, that connection is equity, that wayfinding will help when it comes, and that the free Emery Go-Round is an example of how we can have equity in the city and building off of that in other realms as well. Next slide? Or not next slide, sorry. Thank you, thank you. And how to measure sustainability was a big topic that was discussed. So discussing different methods, from formal data collecting, that's like larger, like American Community Survey, to things that are once a year, like Bike to Work Day, and then using Ped Bike scanners that we have on the Greenways, expanding those when possible. And then, you know, whenever big development projects come in, making sure And then, um, you know, whenever big development projects come in, making sure that we use those numbers as well. So, um, all of those things are pretty much mentioned in the Active Transportation Plan itself, but they reiterated that those are ways to measure our sustainability. And then implementable, the ATP has improved interdepartmental communication, and other cities look to Emeryville as an example. So the eleven policy recommendations. So we approached this very similarly to how we, uh, measure progress on our general plan that reports to the state every year. So we said, is it complete? Is it in progress? Is it ongoing? Or have we not started this yet? So for the eleven policy recommendations, three things were not yet. So that was engaging partners with Emery Unified School District for safe routes, using, uh, counts for the ATP updates, because it's only been one year. So we talked about how to do counts for next year, but did not do them this year. And then data for tracking progress, again, only one year in. So highlights for eight ongoing things are evaluating opportunities to integrate ped and bike infrastructure. So the Sustainable Street Escape CIP program, or all active transportation projects are in there. Evaluate opportunities for leading pedestrian intervals. Uh, so signals will be timed on Hollis, optimizing LPI, were applicable in the city. And then evaluating new legislation regarding lower speed limits. So citywide speed limits updates, they were reduced to as low as fifteen mile per hour, such as on Horton Street. So that was something we were able to do before that legislation came into effect. The fourteen programmatic recommendations. So in those, uh, different areas that we talked about of equity, encouragement, education, and safe routes to school, evaluation, and then other. Next slide. So for equity, we have two that are outgoing and one that's not what's, not yet. So targeted outreach and programs, that's ongoing, that's something that we'll always be working on. Ped bike infrastructure equity programs, that's something we'll always be working on, it's ongoing. Um, and then accessory giveaway programs, that's something we've done in the past, that's something we did not have staff time for this year. And then targeted outreach programs, so this is ongoing for equity, uh, we just talked about. So this is a little bit more detail, sorry. So the Powell Street survey was provided in English, Spanish, and Cantonese, based on pre-survey community outreach to figure out how to best, um, reach community members around Powell Street, on Peninsula. And then for encouragement, we have, uh, the five projects there. There's three that are in progress, one not yet, and one ongoing. And so going to that a little bit more in depth on the next slide. Expanded bike share, we had a lot of, uh, fun with that this year with the new station at Bay Street, that was long awaited, reduce membership costs, and then work on fleet expansion began, and that should be realized next year. So when I come back to you next year, well, I'll be talking more about the fleet expansion. Next slide. And then, uh, the highlights for this, the car street, the car-free street events went really, really well this year. Harvest Festival was again over by our new park. The Halloween Spooky Streets, new event with, uh, street closures went very, very well. And the Holiday Parade, we've been doing that every year. And again, that's closed to automobiles, uh, creating safe spaces for bicyclists and, uh, people, uh, walking or strolling. Employer-based encouragement programs, we don't have a specific program for that, but our, um, Bike to Anywhere Day is our big event that pulls in all sorts of businesses to contribute, people volunteer, businesses donate things. We have five Energizer stations, we had Passport this year, and it was our biggest event in twenty twenty-four of any of our Bike to Wherever Day events. So each year it keeps getting bigger, and I can already tell you that next year I get to say the same thing. So our trajectory is really, really good. And then our big bike parking retrofit, where we got a hundred new racks with bows on them right during the holidays. That was very exciting and very visible to the community as well. People really noticed it, not just because of the bows, but it was a big increase in bike parking and access throughout the city. So for education and safe routes, the safe routes to school program, um, that was something that there was assessment on before the ATP, and we just need to pick that back up and get that rolling. That's going to go in line with outreach to EUSD. And then adult bicycling steals classes, we didn't get around to that. But just today, I was, uh, having emails with how to get that going, uh, and during this year and the early next year as well. So we're working on that. Um, and despite not having a designated coordinator for safe routes to school, the city has still been installing street improvements near the school campuses to improve safety. So it's quite notable that it really is moving in the right direction, despite not having all the staff and, um, relationships in place to make it a bigger thing. Um, and in winter of twenty twenty-three, traffic calming measures were done on Steve Dean Drive and Doyle Street specifically, near ACCO. And that was at the beginning of the adoption. So something I didn't mention at, at the beginning of the presentation, but is noted at the bottom of each slide, is that this was adopted in October twenty twenty-three. So for this report year, it goes from October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, and subsequent reports will be annual. So evaluation, uh, for driver education programs, we haven't started that. And traffic counts, that's ongoing, as we mentioned earlier. And the ped bike counter was installed on South Bay Front Bridge in twenty twenty-four. So that's our new counter, which is pretty exciting. And I'll say that, uh, on Bike, Bike to Wherever Day this year, I noticed people actively, as they were going by the counter on the Greenway, pointing at it and like looking for the counts and like talking about it compared to other days. So wayfinding, that's in progress, that program is underway. And enforcement, we have it listed as not yet, but enforcement is also, uh, listed as something that we're not doing actively as part of this plan, because there were concerns about equity and disproportionate impacts to enforcement. So what we mean by enforcement in this context is not giving people tickets, for example, for not having a light, but being able to stop someone who doesn't have a light and offer them one. That was, that's not something that we had staff capacity to do this year, but is absolutely on our radar as something that's needed, something that, um, our police department has done in the past and we look forward to doing in the future. And wayfinding progress, the program was adopted, the design work occurred in twenty twenty-four, and we're looking forward in twenty twenty-six to actual installs. And there's also public art wayfinding projects going on as well. So for actual projects, so we have this on four maps. So what we did is we highlighted portion, highlighted the maps that are adopted into the plan to show where work has been done. And you'll kind of see themes, it's a little bit redundant because they're asked, I'll show you, I'll show you. Let's look at the maps, let's look at the maps together. Okay, so major projects and studies, there's the Loop, Fortieth Street, Powell Street, Hollow South of Powell. Those are all going, those are all moving forward. And if we have, um, the next slide for that to show the map, you'll see underway is, uh, in yellow, work in progress is blue, and then green is, uh, built or in progress, like on, on the ground in progress. So as we move forward, you're going to see that there's intersections highlighted along that on the intersections map, and studies highlighted in that on the studies map, for example. So let's go to the next slide. So for proposed pedestrian improvements, again, Powell Street is under study, and Hollow Street, south of Powell, is under construction, I'm sure everybody's noticed that, with spot improvements for all intersections and transit stops. Go to the next slide and showing that. And it's a good portion of the city. We also have the, um, the quiet zone there on the north part of the city. And what's, and the, uh, plan that was already completed, uh, before this was the connection to the, um, the South Bay Front Bridge and the new park. Next slide. So for spot improvements, we have Forty-seventh Adeline, Fifty-third and Horton, and Sixty-seventh and Shellman for the quiet zone, which I just mentioned on the last slide as well. And there you can see the specific intersections that are, uh, mentioned in the plan and then highlighted here. Um, and it's pretty evenly represented across from north, south of the city, which is pretty exciting to have, and east to west as well. Next slide. And then proposed bikeways, that specific, uh, bikeway infrastructure, uh, there's Doyle Street Separated Bikeway, Shellman Class Four, and Fortieth Street and Shellman Final Design Phase, uh, which is fully funded for construction. And looking at that map, you'll see that that kind of brings the previous maps together. So we have a good portion of the city showing some sort of work being done or completed in one year. This is one year of progress on our ATP. I don't anticipate all years we'll be able to highlight the same amount, but certainly the work is moving forward in all of these, so I expect to see much of this highlighted next year as well, and then other areas as we move forward with other aspects of the plan. Next slide. So, uh, the same presentation went to the Transportation Committee, BPAC, Planning Commission, and, um, here we are today. For the feedback we got at those, uh, got at those meetings is that next year, um, to include more information on the funding and how the projects are being funded, and people did suggest various data sources, particularly BPAC, include next year, and to access, and try to be assessing changes in ped bike and transit numbers and see if that's actually reflective of behavior. We don't expect all numbers to be a trend line, particularly because things we measure like, um, Bike to Wherever Day, it might rain one year, right? So participation isn't even, is what I'm trying to say. But we're looking for trajectories over entirety of the ATP. So we'll get to see over time how those maps are matching up with behavior. So in general, everyone so far has been, um, impressed with how much we've gotten done in one year. Aye. And so for your review tonight, whatever questions you may have about the ATP and comments or recommendations you have on reporting for next year. And thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Navarre. Members, any questions?
I'll ask this one, this, this pedestrian, uh, improvements, what are the plans for? Um, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I think good job, great job to all the departments who have contributed to making this happen and ha- having a continuous trajectory of improvement. Just curious to know, what more can we do for pedestrian and the differently abled?
Yeah, so for, um, pedestrians specifically, what's going on right now is the, the Hollis, um, improvements, and then the Powell Street study, that's looking at pedestrians as well as bicycles. Um, a lot of the improvements are somewhat holistic, right? So they do address sidewalks at the same time. Or when you look at intersections, you're not improving an intersection just for one mode, right? It's looking at it holistically and looking at how it works together. So I'm not really sure if I'm answering this question in a way that's helpful, but it, it fits together. And how it shows up in the plan is that we se- did separate out some specific pedestrian improvements versus bicycle when it wasn't in the same exact location necessarily, or might require a separate project. But I don't have a specific answer to how pedestrians will be addressed moving forward, because it's kind of done holistically, unless Public Works would like to answer that in a completely different way than I did.
Sure, I think essentially just echoing what you said, uh, we really don't look at projects on a mode-by-mode basis. It's integrated, and, um, so what she presented in the maps, or what they presented in the maps has multiple lenses that often apply to one project. And so that's essentially the strategy. So confirm me.
Any other questions? I just had one clarifying question. I'm looking at the highlights, uh, that the three colors, the yellow being the study is underway. I think that's straightforward. And then the light blue, work in progress, uh, is that referring, is that like design? Like detailed design progression?
Yeah, I, it's probably, that's something I think next year I'll title better. Um, but yes, that's probably the work that you can't see, right? There's work being done, like studies, assessments, engineering, all that kind of stuff, but you're not necessarily seeing it on the ground. The green is what you can tell has happened, where you can see the difference physically.
I see, yeah, and the green is also straightforward with the, the build status.
There's that in between, right? The study and the actual building, that's where the bulk of the work is, right?
Got it.
So the, the blue is probably going to be a lot moving forward.
Thanks for clarifying that. Uh, if there's no other questions, we'll move to public comment. Seeing no members of the public, I'll bring this back to council for, uh, discussion or guidance. This is a, Navarre, you're looking for, uh, this is feedback for future reports, is that right?
Yeah, and this is the first time we brought this. And so without having a lot of direction, I made up how to present this. I like how I did it, but maybe there's other things that you want included or other ways you'd like the information conveyed, and I'm totally open to that. And as I said, we're going to have more information to present each year, because it's only one year we had here. So we'll actually have some data as we move forward and things like that, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Member Welch.
I did have a question, and my apologies if I missed this. This will be posted online for people to revisit, members of the community, anyone that wants to. Yeah, that would be my, my only suggestion. I think it's a very comprehensive, uh, report. Thought it was very well done. Thank you for it. Um, it's just having it available for everyone moving forward, I think, would be great, so we can all just track with the progress.
You had to address that, I really appreciate you bringing that up. As, as you know, we're doing the website updates. And one of the things that I'm working on is, for this, it's only been one year right now for the ATP, but, um, to have on the ATP page posted along with it, the progress report for each year, and then be doing that for this, um, the general plan, the housing element as well. So you receive those reports, but we don't have them all in one place online right now. You have to like go search for it and bring it up, and it comes up in the council presentations. I'm going to make that all integrated on one page for those specific plans. So whenever we do an update for a plan, it will go on that plan page, and that's part of the website update that I'm working on.
Suggestion.
Other comments or feedback? Member Solomon.
Yeah, thank you, Navarre, wonderful job. Um, so, uh, two small comments. One, um, just to mention, in addition to this, and you know, this will be on the, on the website. Um, I know, especially Bike to Work Day, but also the other city events that we've done, the, um, uh, stand or, you know, the poster that we have with all the different projects that Public Works is working on, I know has been really well received by people I've talked to, and they ask questions and it seems very engaging. Um, so that seems like another great venue to highlight our progress. Um, and in addition to the infrastructure projects that are often on that poster, um, I was just thinking it could be, if there are programs, you know, we're doing a lot of other really exciting work, that, that could be another way to, um, highlight our, our work. Um, and then secondly, and I mentioned this in the Transportation Sustainability Committee, um, and I think it came up again in Planning Commission, um, but, and, you know, curious to work with you and, um, Public Works and the city manager to understand, looking forward, you know, through the, the entire plans, uh, the, the Active Transportation Plan's lifespan, um, are there, are we on track to cover all of the, all of the goals that we set out? Um, and the, you know, my, my priority is, are there, are there items where we need additional funding or we need additional focus from council, need additional input, um, so that we don't get to the end of the plan and say, well, you know, we, we didn't get to that one for reasons that we should have identified. So, um, yeah, I think we're making great progress. Hopefully, this, in, you know, a year, we, we come back and have, uh, as excellent of a presentation. Um, but just want to make sure that, you know, we have the information to, uh, to, to make those decisions. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
I do.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so thank you again for the presentation and all the, uh, the explanation that you gave about this holistic, um, way of looking at the plans. I think people are more inclined to look at it maybe separately, where what are we doing for pedestrians or what are we doing for the differently abled? Uh, because those are the questions that come up or I encounter. Um, most of the time, people are asking, yeah, it's all the, the bike routes, but what about pedestrians? What are, and it seems to me that people want that in a way that is separately fed to them versus, oh, we look at it as a holistic, um, picture and we put it there. I think that there needs to, if we can do something, like we are prioritizing pedestrians on Hollis, and that's a pedestrian, uh, transit route, and that's what, maybe next year, you'll have something to talk about when you separate those categories. We have bike routes or bikeways, these, we have X amount of streets that are bikeways or bike, they are bike paths, and they are designated elevated paths for bikes on X amount of streets. Our Y amount of streets have pedestrian access. I think that would probably help, uh, many people with that, you know, data, and even putting it on the maps that we have.
I, I appreciate that feedback, and I do think, since people, um, you know, this is a concern of BPAC, right? That, that, um, it's easy for bike voices to, um, talk over, um, ped voices. And I, I think there is a healthy awareness of that, which is good. Um, but addressing that in part by maybe delineating things a little bit more, like you're saying, I think would be helpful to show how things are being addressed. Also, what that made me think of is that, um, I'm actually going to be giving this presentation to Commission on Aging, uh, as well, because, um, when they were developing their, I forget what it's called off the top of my head, I apologize. But they were developing their plan for, that has different areas for how seniors in our community access resources, transportation is one element of that. And I helped them talk through that, because it was at the same time as ATP development, and they requested that, see this as well. And so I'm sure I'm going to be getting lots of feedback from them about pedestrian access as well, and how to best handle that. So I think that's in line with what you're talking about, so.
Absolutely, I think to highlight the fact that we have the pedestrian bridge and that that would also, uh, I think some people don't know about that, how easy it is, it's very accessible and how easy it is to get there. You can even take the Emery Go-Round, I think that, that would help.
Thank you.
Great presentation, uh, and also great first stab at, uh, assimilating what I think is a very complex, uh, there's a, there's a lot that goes into this. Uh, one thing that jumped out at me, and it's really nice to One thing that jumped out at me, and it's really nice to see the highlights progressing, like you mentioned the, as you go from the yellow to the blue to the green, and you know, I'm imagining in a year's time, we might be looking at a different set of highlights, and it, I'm trying to think of the best way to be able to visualize that progress, like where were we a year ago? And I'm wondering if there's, maybe, I don't want to overcomplicate this, but maybe there's like an accompanying spreadsheet in the back with these projects, and you can actually see, okay, in the year 2025, this project advanced from 35% study design to, you know, 90% or something. And here's something else that was in now the detailed design, that's now maybe starting its built state. And I, this information might already exist, and one thing that, Member Carr, it just gave me another idea, you can imagine this, this map where people can actually see these little points of interest, and they could click on the item perhaps, I don't know if there's a way to make it interactive perhaps, you know, maybe I'm looking forward a few years improvement here. And then they can see, okay, this intersection improvement, I can now clearly see that this is a, this, what this will look like for bikes, for pedestrians, because maybe that information resides somewhere. There's probably a presentation that somebody could click on and it opens up, or a info page on, say, the Fortieth Street project. But I think the best way to visualize the progress is, I'm kind of more of a spreadsheet person. I mean, maps are great, but I think in a spreadsheet, you can really quantify it, if it's available to quantify, because we do have these very discrete design phases and study completion. So, and, and I'm mostly encouraging us to leverage what might already be out there versus, you know, having a FTE spend the next year putting this together, because that's not really, but let's figure out what's already out there and find, maybe there's like a reasonable way to capture and communicate. So then in a year's time, when we're looking at this, we'll, we'll have a concrete sense of the project progress. And I say that as somebody who, you know, I have a lot of enthusiasm, and when I speak to people about the Emeryville Loop and these other projects that are taking place, that are transforming the city, and then when I'm describing that to my wife and friends, family, people I run into, they always say, well, when's it going to be done? Or where, where are they? I'm like, oh, I don't quite, I think they're studying something, maybe there's a grant that's coming through, like, I'm never quite sure, and I'm never quite sure where to look. And usually I just bug staff, but you know, it, it could be nice if there was a place that I could possibly look first. And then you could also imagine members of the public finding that on their own, maybe coinciding with the new website. So these are just some thoughts.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and as a fellow spreadsheet enthusiast, I have, I have, I actually did create a spreadsheet this year, but I did not share it, because one, it wasn't cute, okay? It's functional, but not cute. And then two, because there is only one column so far, but I, I do plan on making it, one cuter, and two, it will become more useful in presenting information as we go more linearly into this project.
Functional is great. Thank you, Navarre.
Actually, if you allow me, sorry, a little additional detail.
Yeah, go ahead.
In your regular Transportation and Sustainability Committee meetings, there's a section where we provide project updates. There's an attachment in that section. That attachment comes out of a database, which can easily, and is already formatted as a table. So that would be essentially the raw data that we could work with Navarre on preventing, presenting a more polished version. That's all.
That sounds great. And again, it's about leveraging the work that you're already doing and elevating that, hopefully not creating more work, because I know you can spend all your time reporting out progress instead of making progress. And I think I would always put making progress above reporting progress. Thank you.
Maybe it won't be a cute spreadsheet next year, no problem.
That's fine. You can add some emojis.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Mayor Mora, if I could just add a point of clarification. You may not be aware, but Councilmember Pryforce did step off the dais pursuant to legal advice that he refrained from any discussion regarding the Fortieth Street project. So he absolutely took the correct step tonight and was not involved in the discussion. I just want that to be part of the record for these proceedings.
Thank you for noting that, Mr. Kennedy.
Is this an action item?
So as an action item, what would the motion be? Or is this an action item? Did we provide the direction?
We'll accept the report, motion to accept the report.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the rule.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Councilmember Solomon?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Mora?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have department head reports.
No report this evening.
After that, we have future agenda item, requests from council members. Members, are there any future agenda items? Member Pryforce? No?
So I'd like to place on a future agenda item, a discussion about returning the Pledge of Allegiance to council proceedings, which I will demonstrate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a republic for which stands one nation, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Members, with a show of hands, is there support for adding the Pledge of Allegiance to a future agenda? Seeing none, the motion fails. Are there any other future agenda items? Seeing none, the time is 8:42, this meeting is adjourned.